I'm Anthony Amato. I am the Commission Chair. I'm a junior at Vista Grande. And outside of the Commission, I'm involved in theater, and I'm the editor in chief of our school newspaper, The Spartan Shout.
Hi, my name is Reese Maestis. I am a member of the Youth Commission. I'm in 10th grade and outside, or in school, I dance. At Union.
My name is Gracie Anila. I'm a senior at Union. And I'm a Commissioner. And I play guitar at school. And it's my fifth year on the Youth Commission.
I'm Emma Anila. I'm a junior at Union. And I do varsity and competition spirit line there.
I'm Melina Watley. I'm a junior at Vista Grande. And I'm the founder and president of the Black Student Union. And I'm also a three-sport varsity athlete.
My name is Kira Dela Cruz. I'm the vice chair of the Commission. I'm in 11th grade at Vista Grande. And I'm treasurer of key club and on varsity tennis.
My name is Stephanie Perez Solosa. And I'm a senior at Casa Grande Union. And I am a member of biotechnology. And I'm a commission- Commissioner.
Always happens.
My name is Peyton Salazar. I'm in the 11th grade at Vista. Oh, I'm a member of the Youth Commission. Outside of this, I do tennis and key club.
Hi, I'm Ula Lopez. I'm treasurer of the Youth Commission. I'm in 11th grade. I go to Union. And I'm also part of varsity and competi- on the competition cheer team. And I'm class of 2025's SRO.
Hi, my name is Drake Maestis. I am on the Youth Commission. I'm a Commissioner. And outside of the Youth Commission activities, I like to spend time being an Arizona DECA State Officer. And also, I am a huge advocate for entrepreneurship in the city of Casa Grande.
Hi, my name's Iris Moreno. I'm a junior at Vista. And I'm a student athletic trainer. Oh, and I'm also a member on the Youth Commission.
My name is Alexis O'Neil. I am the Commission Secretary. I am a senior at Casa Grande Union High School. And when I was in school still, I participated in key club and NHS.
Hi, my name is Sawyer Barth. I go to Union. I'm a member of the Youth Commission. And I'm involved in DECA.
I'm Holly Ricosi. I am an advisor for the Youth Commission. I am the executive director of Casa Grande Main Street. I was a Youth Commissioner for two years. Yeah, I help them everywhere I can.
Hi, I'm Matt Herman. I went to Union. And I was only a one-sport varsity athlete.
And I'm Lisa Fitzgibbons. And I went to Casa Grande Union, right here, when the school was here. And I was a varsity pom, spirit, you know, I was student council, key club, a lot of things you guys all do. We didn't have the Youth Commission back then. So thank you all, so proud of you guys for everything that you do.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Craig McFarland, City of Casa Grande. Serving in my eighth year. So this'll be it. This is my last year. Term out in December. It's been a, been a lot of fun. Especially watching you guys grow and your predecessors grow and come through the, you know, working with the city council. It's been, been a lot of fun. So thank you all for being here.
Anthony Edwards, City Council. Went to Union, played football, wrestling. I'm also a member of DECA. My teacher, Ms. Jew, Mayor McCaw, says I tell you hello. And so, um, thank you for all that you do. And we look forward to working with you.
Hi, my name is Bob Huddleston. I'm in my second term with the City Council. Cougar history goes deep in this group. And I'm, uh, I'm one of those. Very happy to see you all here. This is one of our favorite things to do each year with the council. And I was especially impressed with Holly. Because that, that is, uh, to us, it's one of the goals of this group to have you go through this process and then end up serving the city in a capacity that you've been trained for. So good to see you all.
Donna McBride, City Council. I'm in my second term. I am a senior, but not in the same way most of you are. I also, but it does, if it counts, my husband went to Union. And this was the cafeteria for him that long ago. I too was actually in DECA. I was state vice president in West Virginia. So I was really excited to see the things that DECA is doing. So we're glad you guys are here.
So I'm going to speak on our upcoming Washington DC trip. 10 of us Commissioners are so excited to be able to attend the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference in Washington DC on March 10th through the 13th. We hope to bring back lots of new skills and ideas back to our community, Youth Commission, schools, and for seniors, their future careers in universities. Some things that we'll be doing on this two-day conference is engaging in educational sessions and making valuable connections, followed by an exclusive day of advocacy on Capitol Hill, where attendees can apply everything they've learned to support their communities with federal resources. We are, we are so grateful to have been given this opportunity. And thank you guys all so much for your support and generosity. We are very thrilled to gain the tools and connections we need to build a brighter community.
So I just got news about two hours ago that that trip is officially greenlit, both on their end and ours. So that's some celebratory news is up in the air there. Now it's not. So we thank you guys and also Larry and the City Manager's Office and Parks and Rec, everyone that's helped us. In steps we've already taken, there's a lot more to take. But it's been a process just to get here. So we thank all of you for all that help. It means a lot for the city to be dedicating the time, resources, and energy to the future leaders. I-10, I-10 in Quartzon.
I do have one question. Do you guys know if other Youth Commissions around the state are going? Have you had contact with any of the ones that, you know, come to our leadership?
We haven't, but there are regular attendees. The city of Good Year regularly attends. They have councilwoman on an advisory board. I think the Hispanic elected officials board. And then Surprise or Superior went last year. I don't think they're going again. But Mayor Mila's pretty active in the National League. So there's always a handful. Tempe was there last year. So you can usually count on being able to see some neighbors.
So as you may know, our 20th anniversary is this year. And so we were initially hosting an event in January, which you might have been aware of. But we've decided to postpone it until next term. So we've decided to come up with three key words for our 20th anniversary. My word is dedicate. Because we're not only dedicating ourselves to our community, but also our new goals, such as getting more involved with municipal levels of government.
Our second word is engage. And we're aiming to be more visible in and engage within our own community by involving ourselves in more community events and partnerships and by establishing our new events and initiatives.
And our third is lead, which is something we've done for the past 20 years. But it's always a good reminder. And we're approaching that leadership with, with kind of a new vision. These three words are all part of our vision, but also new perspective. We're, we're looking to lead with our awareness of our constituents' need in mind. So our constituents are all the youth of Casa Grande, right? And so as we shape our initiatives and our projects that are going to be a part of our 20th year, keeping what the youth of Casa Grande need and want in mind is, is always at the forefront. So that's, that's what we'll be leading with. So lead?
Engage.
Dedicate! The vision for Youth Commission 20th Year, remember it. Lead, not, not like poisoning. So. The A-word is action. We just, it was, there were three people present, so. We're, we're looking to incite action. And one of the words is lead, so it was, it was muddled. But since Matt's lobbied for it, we've got action too. And so that's one thing, obviously, we're going to DC with in mind. And we're looking to come back with things. Obviously, the experience there is a big part. But incorporating everything we do into action and change is, is on our minds for this 20th year. And we just want to recognize in our 20th year, one thing on our mind is the Youth Commission's history. We started out in the CGMS band room, I'm told. It was before we were alive. So it had humble orig- it had humble origins. Had humble origins. And, you know, it was really a process to get recognized by the city. But the city's always been very supportive through your term mayor, which is now sadly ending. It's been eight years of support to the Youth Commission. And also, just to thank you to Ms. Donna for having founded the Commission 20 years ago and being a support.
I'm not, no comment.
But to all of you, there's, it's never been, there's never been a situation where we're hesitant to go to council or for, for support. So we thank you for that.
Okay. So coming up is our annual Arizona Youth Government Summit. And with our theme this year for that will be connections in government. This theme will focus on togetherness as well as ethics, sportsmanship, and networking skills needed in government. And with that, our event will be held on May 4th, 2024. Our subcommittees are working diligently to provide a great experience this year for our summit. For example.
We have food and activities, working on activities, panels, workshops, and games. Speakers and logistics are currently working out and, and out the actual place of the summit and getting our speakers for this event. Sponsors and invitees, invites are working on getting fundings and inviting other councils to attend the event. Lots of delegation and great things happening.
Hi. My name is Elle. I go to Union and I'm a junior. Oh, I'm the public relations officer. Oh, I play tennis. I'm in student council. I'm in key club. I'm in NHS. I'm in this.
I'm here to talk about one of our new initiatives for our 20th year, and that would be youth onboard. With this, we strive to educate ourselves and bring more involvement in local governments. We want to achieve youth voices in specific and niche areas, having youth license on other boards and commissions. We are wanting our pilot year to be just youth commissioners. As for the terms to come afterwards, we want to open it up outside of the Youth Commission. So that would include allowing us to sit in on. Sorry. Those board meetings with you guys. We would like your support.
And so specifically, those are the Arts and Culture Commission. Oh, I got it scribbled somewhere. The Arts and Culture Commission, the Transit Advisory Committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, and the Community Services Advisory Board. So those are the four boards and commissions that we're looking at expanding youth voice onto. And so that's something we've already talked about with, on the staff end. But we're excited for your official support as the appointees and kind of superiors of those boards and commissions. Yeah, so in our first year, we're looking at having it be, not staff, but those liaisons being, coming from the Youth Commission. So it would be someone with a particular interest in that area. So it would be one of us. And then we'd evaluate how that liaising would work and if it was bringing any, enough valuable information back to the Commission. And if expanding it outside of the Commission would be something we're looking into. Okay, perfect. And Larry has, yeah, been in his ear about it a little bit, about he, so he's been in contact with, I think it's the Executive Leadership Board? Team, about those appointments. But for sure, we'll send that your way as well. Yes, I just wanted to make sure there was infrastructure set up on that.
On top of all of these activities, we are also beginning our Heart of Casa Grande. Submissions are beginning in early March. They're going until early April. And we will announce the winners in late April. The Heart of Casa Grande Scholarship has been around for several years now. There are three categories, art, video, and essay. All three gain $500 for one recipient. And it's asking the youth of Casa Grande, specifically juniors and seniors of our local high schools and in the Pinal County area. It's asking them what their Heart of Casa Grande is. So for mine, it would be City Hall, just due to the extraordinary history that it has from being a high school to being a place of work and government. And we are just very excited about being able to network this and communicate with it across the schools and across Pinal County.
For me, I said Passion Church. That's the church that I've gone to and I've grown up in. And it's just been a place that, you know, I've built a lot of community there. You know, I've preached sermons there in the youth group. I've done a bunch of different stuff there. So I picked Passion Church for my Heart of Casa Grande.
For me, I picked my mom's ice cream shop, downtown ice cream shop. I don't know if y'all been there, but y'all should go. But I don't know, it just feels like a second home to me. And like, it's just so welcoming there.
So I chose Van Hazel Stadium at Casa Grande Union High School Football Field, mainly due to because my past four years in high school, I've been to many events where I've got to bond with all my friends, have so much fun. But it's also where I hold some of my most favorable memories out there, cherishing some people who I've just celebrated my whole life with, some people who I've lost. But most of all, it's a place where I found basically what kind of person I want to be in my life.
My heart of Ca- my heart of Casa Grande is Vago Lake. It's just beautiful. There's a lot of good scenery. And it's just a place where I've made a lot of memories with both family and friends. And it always just brings me back to a kind of calm state and just fun there.
I chose Cookie Jar is mine because I've grown up there and I love going there.
I've chose Casa Grande Mountain Park as really being one of the unique parks in the city with our trail system and all those investments that have gone in there from Parks and Rec and Mayor and Council. And it's, I feel like where the community can be both, most in touch with nature and the positive results of municipal government.
I chose Dayby Park. When my parents came to the United States and like, we didn't know a lot of people. Like, that's basically where we spent like, half of our time. Like, we learned how to fish. Like, I played soccer there, everything. Like, that was just a place that I was really connected with growing up.
My heart of Casa Grande is Vago Park. Probably for the same reason Stephanie's is hers. Yeah, the Filipino community, we just always hung out there. We always had parties there. And all of my core memories are from there.
My heart of Casa Grande is the Boys and Girls Club. The old building to be specific, because I grew up there for like, five years. My parents would leave me there. But I made so many memories and met so many people. I also developed a, like, urge to be with my community and help the younger kids, as I was always growing up, around kids and adults that always pushed me. I also have worked there the past year at the new building.
My heart of Casa Grande is Iron City Polaris, my dad's new shop. Because I think it's so beautiful. And I just like, I think it's a bright new place for Casa Grande. And I love all the guys that work there. They are so funny. And it's just a place I can go for some laughs and work. Go there and buy a razor.
My heart of Casa Grande is Crossroads Church. I love just being there and seeing everyone smile and everyone have the same goal to grow in faith. And I work there. I'm a barista and I just love it there. I've met so many of my mentors and pastors that I talk to like, every day. And it just makes me so happy being there.
Mine is the Dairy Queen. The old one. Not only for the historical reason, but me, me and my family went there every week. So every Sunday, so it's kind of nostalgic to me. So that's my heart of Casa Grande.
My heart of Casa Grande is Sun Valley Church. It's like a second home to me. I'm getting more involved every day with my church. And it's just like, my favorite place to be.
Oh, we have to share?
And we know the people is number one, so let's talk about them.
Yeah, okay, right. You know, and I think for me, I can say that the Heart of Casa Grande is when I go down Florence Street and it's old town, you know, in, in our community. And somebody's beeping at us. And I, I love the fact that the Neon Park. I like the fact that you see people walking and going into the little shops, the mom and pop shops. And, and it's really where Casa Grande started. And we have so much around us that we can enjoy. But it's just something about when we have the street fairs and the things like that downtown that talk about who we are, you know, as a community.
Mine, mine would have to be this building right here. Between going to high school and, and government, I've spent a lot of time in this building. I wanted to add that what's really interesting, impressive with all of you is the diversity of, of the places and things that you, that you find to be the heart of Casa Grande. You're, you're connected to this community and that's really good to see.
My heart of Casa Grande. I would say my church, Great Avengers Temple, is where I was raised up. My mother was raised up as a little child there. I was raised up there. And it's a place where I grew spiritually so. And this has helped me immensely as a man and be a better individual in my community.
Heart of Casa Grande. It, it has to be City Hall. This is, you know, this was where the original high school. This was where so many people grew up. And, and it's still here and it's still, it's the center of the community. And it's just a, you know, it's a, it's a cool, old building. And it has so much history that it's, it's just hard to overlook. I mean, there's lots of great places. You guys have named a bunch of them. There are some amazing spots in Casa Grande. Nobody's mentioned the Neon Sign Park. I mean, there's another opportunity there. So it's. Oh, I just stole, stole her, her favorite spot. But it's, I thought you'd just say Main Street, so. Anyway, a lot of great places. And it's good, good to see you guys here. And good to see, again, to Anthony's point, the diversity of the locations and really the diversity of the group as well. You guys represent the city very well, so thank you.
You know, of course, that is a tough question. And I know you say the people. But for me, it's really, it really goes beyond the, it's really that sense of community that there's so much passion and support of each other. And so that's really my heart, is just everything about, you know, the diversity, the diverse neighborhoods and what those neighborhoods bring. It's so, there's so many different people in this community that, that bring so much to, to our city. And, and just having that support. I grew up, I was a little kid. And, and that's why I came back here to raise my family, because people were really, really supportive of me and still continue to be. So my heart is truly the people and the support of all the people that I grew up with, right here. A lot of memories here, for sure. and the support of all the people that, um, I grew up with right here. A lot of memories here, for sure. I got in trouble in this room, but...
I never got in trouble. So, obviously the City Hall, but that's been said, but just because I spent a good part of my life here and built a lot of memories here. My mom went here. Um, but also CG Mountain too, as, you know, growing up, we used to go out there. Now we have a lot more amenities out there and actual trails, and believe it or not, I do go out there quite a bit and hike, and it's pretty fun. Um, so I like that and the fact that it, you know, it's kind of a beacon. You know, you can see that CG and just gives the pride of our community and lets people know that's where we are and that's, that's where you are, so.
I'm actually not gonna say the Neon Sign Park, but, no, um, definitely the downtown district, but I'll go beyond Florence Street because it goes all the way to the museum, um, you know, the women's club as well. And it's not even just because I represent it. Um, I grew up down there. My dad made sure I knew, um, where we came from with all the murals. Rose Johnson was there, Sunset Court. Um, and, but be able to come back and then keep those alive for our younger generations. You know, my daughter knows where downtown Casa Grande is, and that's really important. So the entire downtown district, including the Neon Sign Park, uh, just because of the history, yeah. Uh, Florence Street, Marshall Street, uh, it goes all the way down. We have all the historic buildings, all the signs, um, you know, as far down as the motels on Pinal. Uh, I mean, those are all part of the historic district as well, so.
Oh, my heart. And, and so when I think of Casa Grande, if I were to leave this community and never come back, and you know, I won't remember necessarily the buildings or the mountains, but I'll always remember the people. And I, I think of earlier this year, uh, when Dr. Limeberry, the principal at Union, and I were driving down to the hospital to pay our respects to Haley's family. And Dr. Limeberry's new to the community, and I said, "You're about ready to find out what makes this community so special and how this community is gonna wrap their arms around this family." And it has been absolutely amazing, the, uh, the candlelight vigil that the cheerleaders put on their heart in continuing to go forward, qualifying for Nationals, uh, having to redo the, uh, the, this, the, their competition piece, not once, but twice, once after, uh, having to redo it after Haley passed and then some injuries. Uh, the firefighters that started a, a GoFundMe account that I think at last count was over $80,000. Uh, but not only more amazing to that is they have also volunteered, uh, to work shifts all the way through March to allow her father to grieve and things like that. They go in, they cover the shifts for free for them. You'll never forget, uh, times like that. And I've, I'm fortunate, I've never had to have a personal tragedy. Uh, each of the tragedies we had, I take it personal because, you know, Haley was a student of mine. Uh, the student recently passed at Vista, uh, same type of situation, again, where that community wrapped their arms around that family as well. And so that's what always is going to separate this community apart, is we are still a community. Uh, we still look after our brothers, our sisters. We take care of each other, and I hope that never goes away because that's the part of the community and the heart of the community that I'll never forget.
So Mila Lopez and I are going to be talking about the annual Garden of Sunshine that we will be hosting this year. So to really describe it, the Garden of Sunshine is a memorial garden in the community of Casa Grande that is dedicated for some of the youth of the city who are sadly taken away too soon from their families. All are welcome in the city of Casa Grande to help keep their memories alive and bring support to those families in need. And, Mila?
This year, this event will be held on March 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Yes. Um, I'm gonna be talking about our Day of Days of Shredding. Um, the Youth Commission hosts twice a ye- two a year um, in partnership with the First American Credit Union, and we invite community members out to shred any papers that they have and also, um, get rid of their electronics in a safe and way for the environment. Um, this year, it's gonna be on April 20th. And last, during the Fall Day of Shredding, we made over $1,000 in donations.
Thank you. Um, so with all these activities and events we do as a community, I mean, as a commission, we also like to, um, connect with the community. So we, um, we volunteer with local community events that are happening. One of those events we did was the street fair. Loved it. I love it so much. Um, it happens the first Saturday and Sunday of January, and what we do, we just help around if anyone's lost anything, and we pick up trash to keep our, um, downtown area clean. And then another event we did was, um, Adopt a Family. This year, we had one family with two boys. We set a budget and started off with, off with the gifts they asked for. We later bought them and gave it to the family. And so, yeah, and Sawyer's gonna talk about the other ones.
All right, so we also, we also took part in the 9/11 Day of Service, so we went and helped, uh, clean up at the Elsie Pearson Shooting Range. So we mainly helped with the setups. We set up some, some of the tents and we arranged the tables. Uh, and on the tables, they had the, uh, the assignments for all the people who came to help, so we helped direct people to those tables, show them where their assignments were. And then we had one of our, our famous tailgate meetings on Matt's truck. And, uh, another event we, we took part in was sensory Santa, so it's where kids with sensory issues in town can come and have a, a time where they can come and experience Santa, be there and be in a judgment-free zone in an area where, uh, their, their behavior is accepted and is okay. So we helped, uh, Parks and Rec set that up. I chaired that committee, uh, with Reese. And, uh, we arranged tables, we blew up inflatables, and then we also manned centers throughout the night, uh, doing different things. Some of them were like getting a certificate that they went to Santa's workshop. They rode a train outside. They did that kind of stuff. And then, uh, we just directed people through the event, and then we helped with the teardown and, uh, cleaned it all up, so it's pretty good.
ADA. Um, so this is a great, um, this event is always, this meeting, um, is always a great reminder, um, of both, of our commitment to our city. Um, it's our only event that is required in our bylaws that we complete every year, and so that's really a statement to the cooperation between, um, our two bodies. And so we thank you. We know, uh, we know we're the hectic, most hectic part of this meeting tonight. And that we, that you all came here for us. Um, and so, um, we thank you for setting your time apart and for, um, ensuring that you hear from us.
Well, thank you. Thank you to all of you. And I would ask, if you haven't, for this next coming year, send us that schedule and get that to Larry, and then he can put it into one of his reports and maybe remind us as they come closer. So, uh, we can get them on our calendars. And if we can, we, I know all of us would love to attend, uh, as many as possible, so. Really appreciate your guys' efforts. Uh, really appreciate you representing the city, uh, and our youth. And so it's important, I think, I know that every council member up here would agree with me that, you know, hearing from you all and seeing you all makes us very proud. And, uh, you know, so we appreciate everything that you do and, and how you represent, uh, at your schools. So, thank you. It's amazing. Give you, give them a round of applause, you guys. Did I preempt it? Are you guys not done yet? Yeah. Okay, good. I just know, I didn't hope I didn't cut you off.
No, and really quick, you know, it, it's so nice to see the passion, you know, um, again, you know, I was your age and doing similar things, and, and I hope you all remember that love that you have for this community and the support and see what a special place it is. So when you all go and experience so much in life, you're gonna go to college. Some of you might go to college, some might, you, of you might get certificates in other trades, you know, but always remember your home, and I think you see this as your home. And I really hope you eventually come back and raise your families here. And, and you know, hopefully, we're gonna continue to grow and bring in, continue with industry and amenities and everything, so you can raise your families like some of us have done, have come back and made a choice to come back here to our hometown and, and be proud and, and strong. So, because it really is a special place. You're gonna see when you go away to school, great, great experiences, but this, this is your heart, this, this place. So I hope you guys will all see that. Sometimes we go away fighting like we're never gonna come back here, you know, but you might.
Yeah, you, you, you think that you do want to get out of here, and then when you do, you're like, oh, you know, some of us never left too far. But as you guys know, I, I have the great pleasure of helping these, this great group of kids, young people, um, a lot, and it's just amazing. You guys all are. I mean, we have meetings on Saturdays at 7:30, you know, 8 o'clock, and they're here, and they do it, and they make plans, and then they plan for doing something the next weekend or the next week, and then they have their committee meetings, and this is truly, I mean, we have myself and Holly as, what, what, we have a laissez-faire style, what are you saying? Where the, our parenting style is, you're gonna burn your hand if you touch it, and we just let them know. But, but, and then we have Sol and, and Danny from the, you know, from the Community Services, but truly, this group drives themselves. They do the work, they do the organization. We're there to just kind of give them suggestions or help them, you know, get in touch with people, but they're the ones that send the emails. They're the ones that reach out to the community to get donations, to get stuff done, to reach out to other commissions to come to their youth government summit to plan everything. I mean, they're the responsible ones and they take it seriously, and it amazes me, a lot of them, like, been here five years, four years, and I'm like, just, it makes me feel good. I'm like, wow, they wanted to come back, you know, like, they enjoyed it, and these kids really do because they love our community like, like we do up here, you know, and this is how we build it. And I'm glad that we have a program like this for them so they can learn that. And, and now we're taking it to the next level this year and getting them even more involved on the commission side, you know, as, as we've been talking about for a couple of years. And as I've taught them, it moves at the speed of government, but we're getting there. But again, they do all the work. There's a lot of commissions we see where they have, you know, full-time advisors who plan everything, say, be here, do this, you know, and they, kids just show up, but these, they do it on their own time. And even tonight, I know everyone, half of these kids had something else, like, up to 10 minutes before they got here, you know, and got here as soon as they could, but that's the dedication. So, you know, as you can hear, they're all, good thing she's on track, right? She ran. Sogger, okay. But yeah, but, but seriously, they all have a lot of stuff going on, and they make time to be part of this community in other ways too, so. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do, and those that came out and helped at Martha Luther King Day, thank you so much. We saw you all out there helping us once again. Appreciate all that you do.
Who, who mentioned Cookie Jar as their Heart of, uh, I, I wanted to thank you because that brought back a lot of memories. That used to be one of my favorite places, but back when it was Flo's Coffee Shop, and, uh, yeah. And, uh, we used to ride our bicycles down there and get a hamburger. The other thing I wanted to share with you is, uh, my history is in law enforcement, and, um, it, the Police Department for a long time, and it still has, uh, an advisory board, uh, called the Police Advisory Board. Now it's the Public Safety Advisory Board. And I was very happy to hear that you, some of you are gonna be participating in some of the boards and commissions because I, I wanted to share with you, one of the things I would always tell that board is that a lot of their value to the city is just the fact that they're in place. If an issue should pop up that we need to get some citizens together to, to explore an issue, we have that in place. We can, we can go to their next meeting and start talking about that, and you guys serve in that capacity as well. We appreciate having a Youth Commission that we know, if we have an issue, uh, that, that's very specific to your group, we can go to you and ask you, what do, what do you think? Uh, what, what would you support? And I would encourage you to, uh, through Matt, um, when you think of things that, uh, what we need in Casa Grande is fill in the blank, uh, let him know. Get it on our radar and, and maybe, maybe we can help. But I, I wanted you to know that we value you in that capacity. You're the experts, and there are times we need your opinion. Thank you.
So I want to clear up just a couple of things, and I want to leave you with a challenge. First of all, it was the bandroom, but it was Casa Grande Middle School Bandroom, and one of the students that came had to jump the fence to break us in because it was locked. So, the, the other thing, you know, some of you may not recall, but, uh, the Youth Commission here was the ones that started uh, being involved with the League of Cities and Towns, uh, because it was never a youth government day there. And, uh, a couple of the, the folks came and said, you know, how come they don't have youth at that, you know, that meeting? And I, and I said, "Well, let's ask them." And so the very first year that they had a youth government day was because of this commission. And, and look how it's grown on a statewide level. Now you guys are going to the National League of Cities. You know, some of us have not even had the opportunity to go, so look at where you're going. But my challenge to you is, I want you to go there, and I want you to learn so you can come back, and not just for our community, but I want you to challenge the Arizona League of Cities and Towns because I think those of you that are going, you know, ask them to put together a workshop, a panel at the league conference this year so that you all can talk about what you learned and the good points and the bad points and the challenges that other, uh, youth and communities across this country, you know, are really facing, because we need to hear that. The, the mayors and councils of all the communities in Arizona need to hear that. So I would really like for you to take that challenge, to get, uh, get a something together. So in August, uh, the end of August, when they have the one here in Arizona, that you guys are on a panel discussion so that, so that, you know, other communities can hear from you because I think that's really important. So, but good luck and have fun. And remember, there is a curfew, curfew in, in that area too.
No, uh, we're so proud of all of you. As your superintendent, I'm proud of how you represent our schools, and so whatever we can do to support you, I know Anthony, you and I need to have a conversation anyhow. So thanks for all you do.
In my, just on a personal note, sorry. Oh, are we done? Oh, no, that's... The Privy Council. Um, so, um, just really quickly, um, one note I always hit in my adv- oh, in my advocacy, um, in DC or at the State League, um, I, I coined this term, I like to think I did, um, ensuring reliable future leadership, and that's something each of you touched on. Um, that's, that's the important thing about having commissions like ours. Um, I always say ensuring reliable future leadership. It's, it's planting that seed in the, uh, in the minds of young leaders that they might want to come back to their community and contribute. Um, we have, uh, alumni like, um, Holly, Zoe Cooper, um, and, and I, I can say that I've never felt a love for my city like I have since joining the commission and seeing the behind the scenes and understanding what, what goes on in building your city and maintaining it. Uh, and so one thing, whenever I'm talking with other, um, with other active commissions, you know, established ones, um, that, it always sounds like they are moving at the speed of government, like they're such gridlock, small cities, big cities. Uh, it doesn't have to do with their size. And, and I've never felt that. I, I was talking to, um, Melinda at Parks and Rec this morning, and I said, we were talking about how a nonprofit is moving slower than us, and I said, "You know, it's a testament to us when our speed of government is faster than everyone else's normal speed." And so, um, I know it sounds like I'm blowing a lot of smoke today, but, um, that's, we're here to talk with you for the one time a year we get to. And so I wanted to thank you guys. And so, and so I just wanted to thank you for the support we get from you, from staff, um, from all the departments. Um, it's, it's unlike anything I've ever heard about happening with other commissions. And, um, so, so thank you.